I have eight AM, Mr. President.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and call the study session for January tenth to order. And ask the clerk to do a roll call, please.
Yes. Dr. Brett Echols.
Here.
Vice Secretary Robert Ooten.
Here.
Secretary Arthur Perry.
Here.
Vice President Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
And President Michael Schaefer.
I'm here as well.
Thank you.
Public comments is the time set aside for anyone wishing to speak on items, not on the agenda, anybody wishing to speak or any public comments indicated to the clerk?
We received written public comments yesterday, which were disseminated to the board.
Yes, thank you. Okay, then we can move to items of study and David, we'll call you forward.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, members of the board. My monthly report for the month of December. This report summarizes major points for three ordinance enforcement topics covering scavenging graffiti and trash container enforcement. For the month of December, the interim code enforcement officer focused his efforts in patrols in various parts of the community. And the goal is to identify and deter incidents of scavenging in residential trash carts left within public view. In the month of December, the district saw a number of complaints filed with the interim code enforcement staff regarding scavenging activity in the city. As with most scavenging complaints, the alleged violations take place in the early morning hours. In order to address resident concerns, the code enforcement officer is controlling the streets by six thirty AM. Included below are instances of scavenging where that were detected while the officer was investigating specific complaints. I caught one scavenger on Wallace. A gentleman in the carts was my first contact with him. And he was kind enough to replace everything that I that he had taken in my presence. So. Any questions on that?
Yeah, just quick question. If memory serves, it's like two months in a row, the scavenging recordings have been one to five.
Have gone down. I was surprised actually yesterday to catch two while I was out, so.
So, and I think, I mean, are your frequencies of getting out in the neighborhoods the same or more or less?
Absolutely. You know, sometimes, I mean, you know, it's maybe seven o'clock in the morning, but I'm trying to get out there as early as possible before they're, you know, emptying those carts.
Well, great job. It shows even the one on my street, I haven't seen him around lately, so.
I did see him at a bus stop.
Well.
With a bag.
Hopefully out of town.
So maybe he lost his transportation, but thank you. I appreciate that.
That's great. Thank you.
And I think a lot of the scavengers, the warmer climes during the.
Like they are going to be difficult.
Scavenging standpoint was on like my pickup day is Thursday. And on Wednesday, we used to, there used to be two or three trucks driving through the neighborhood. You know, looking for stuff and I haven't seen those guys out like they were before. So I think hopefully they're getting the message.
Yeah, I'm sure, you know, just the presence, I believe is, you know, people are seeing that.
Yeah. Arlene, you said you had a comment?
Yes. Yes, I do. You know how we had these scavenger stickers? Do we still have them that we could give them out to these people, especially the ones that you cite? And, you know, stop and talk to them. I have one, you know, I mean, I found them in all my paperwork and I thought, gee, we have, I wonder if we're using them.
So we did have some stickers that were were given to me by Gina. I think they, you know, located them somewhere. I'm not sure of that. It's a pretty good sized sticker. Maybe if I, you know, could put that on a card if I was having some problems in a certain location, but I am handing out a flyer that that does explain that at a certain point, there is going to be a citation issued, so. That would be my first contact is a yellow flyer to them.
Okay, I just thought this really showed it because it is a good size. But yet it goes on the cart and it's giving a message, but that's okay.
Absolutely. And it's in different languages, so that's very helpful as well besides a picture gram.
Question maybe for both you and for Mr. Carey. Christmas tree pickup is done. I mean, we're we're past that, right? You're the eyes on the street for us. Have you noticed Christmas trees still out?
A lot. And, you know, I think our timeline is is a little too soon, in my opinion. I think it probably needs to be. It starts the day after Christmas and I don't know how many people are throwing away their Christmas trees the day after Christmas.
Yeah.
I think the week after to start that two week period of of time would probably be more accurate. I'm still seeing a lot of Christmas trees out.
Yeah, and and I think part of that is the the citizenry doesn't realize what the timing is. We, I think we do a pretty good job of advertising it in the methods that we do, but I think people aren't getting the message.
David, when you see a tree now, what's your process? What do you do?
It's been, especially if there's, you know, some contamination, if it's got a Christmas tree stand or lights or decorations, I'm hanging a tag so that they're they're aware that there's a reason why it hasn't been picked up. And on that tag has information of after you've, you know, taken care of the problem, call, you know, the office or CRNR and someone will be out here to pick it up for you.
I I've noticed a few trees and and again, you guys notice it more than we do. They still don't. The biggest thing to me is they still keep the little stand at the bottom. You know, it's not that hard to get rid of it.
I've literally stopped and have taken some stands off of simple, just a couple of screws. Yesterday I had to work at one and kind of screw it off the little tree, but it takes a couple of seconds and now it's ready for pickup, but the plastic bags as well. I'm I'm surprised to still see plastic bags people have held on to. I guess it deter or stops the, you know, needles from stopping and dropping in the house. So I've just cut that off and thrown that in the cart and now that's able to be picked up as well, so.
We can start calling you Paul Bunyan.
Well, the the Christmas trees were picked up adequately in in my neighborhoods. And then they even picked up ones that had stand on them. You know, the neighbor had one and I was gonna saw it off and it was gone.
So I've been following up with some of those addresses as well. And yesterday I went to fifteen different addresses and there were only a few that the Christmas tree was was still there, but most of them were were ready to be picked up, chopped in half. There was only one that had a stand on it, so I documented that and the location.
Ultimately, one of the solutions is going to be convincing residents that they need to cut the tree up and put it in their organic spend. I mean, if they really want it gone in a hurry, that's even a better way to to get it done is, you know, hack it off in a couple of places and stuff it in the organic bin.
Can't get them to break down cardboard.
I I I get it. I get it.
Well, we're going to give him a hundred and twenty-five gallon cart.
Scott, can I ask you a question? Did we ever hire an outside company?
Yes, we have a third party contractor. He's actually going out to pick up some Christmas trees right now because the program has expired. And so to not delay any more pickups, he is going out today to pick up.
Does he go to specific address?
Yes, we give a specific address. Yes, it's inside a gate. We give him the code and all that stuff, so.
And then I saw one yesterday on Corona or on Corona Street.
I have a comment. I was thinking.
Hang on, Arlene, hang on.
Okay. I just making sure that we did have it in place.
Yes, yes. He's in fact, he's going out today to pick trees up.
Yeah, go ahead, Arlene.
Okay, I was thinking that maybe we should follow up with the daily pilot or some newspaper articles, just to say thank you on behalf of the sanitary district for what they did and then kind of repetitious explain what we had done. And so that way they'd know for next time. And they also know that we're paying attention.
Well, I I think we need to check with the city because I think the city advertises that it's a three week period to pick up Christmas trees. At least that's what my, one of my neighbors told me and.
Maybe we could do it with the city.
Pardon? I would also, I would also not pay for an ad in the daily pilot. I would, I would, I would ask the city to do that during their discussion with the mayor or one of the councilmen to do that at when they have time to talk at the beginning of the meeting.
Right. Good idea.
Mike, if your driver drives by and sees a tree there, do they have any responsibility to let us know?
They're not going to let you know they should let dispatch.
Yeah, okay.
We've had several instances where the drivers have and slide down and ask to go back and get a tree.
Okay, sounds good. Is the regular, regular pickup guy? The organic sky?
Got this question to Scott. We're talking about Christmas trees and from what I understand, it's been, this has been the best year in several years in terms of reliability. So that's great. Could we maybe just agendize this for our upcoming, just to get a quick little review of everything?
Yes, I I've told or instructed Nabilah that in your February study session meeting, we'll give you a full report, which we do every, every year. We give you a full report in the recycling program.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, any of the comments? All right, we'll move to item two, the fourth review of the agreement with CRNR Incorporated. Scott?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Nabilah Guzman is going to be giving this report.
Nabilah.
Good morning.
Members of the board. In your staff report is the fourth review of the draft amendment with CRNR Incorporated. Since our last discussion at the December study session, we have added label language to the amendment per request of the board. We have added that the liquidated damages are subject to CPI. And that the liquidated damages will be applied on an annual basis. So the updated, we updated the missed trash collection to an annual total to, we were confused with whether it was a weekly, was it monthly? So now it's just the annual total that threshold that they have. And we have created exhibit C, D, and E, and exhibit B. It is the compensation schedule once a three cart system is rolled out and language has been added that those rates are subject to CPI. Because the board has, it was the board's wish to delay the rollout until 2024. So that is the rates in 2021 money, but it will be plus CPI. Are the changes to the amendment are in red in your attachment. I am available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. I'll just open it up for comments. Bob?
Well, there's, there's one item that I'm not sure it needs clarification, but I didn't understand. That is on the amendment to Article Five, which talks about the containers that we're putting out. And down in the, down near the end of that paragraph on that page, it says one sixty-five gallon green container. I think that that's supposed to be two. I think it goes on to explain in the next page, you know, the, you know, that they get two, but I think, I think one is, needs to be changed to two, if that's what we're giving them. And.
That language. We do always deliver one organic carts when a new setup is a new home sets of service, but they are allowed up to two. So that might be the confusion, but we can take a look at that.
Okay, then I would put up to two in in that in place of one.
But they have to pay for the second one.
No, not green cards.
You said green cart can get two?
Up to two free organic recycling carts.
And in in item number thirteen compost. I own a home in Upland where my grandkids live and Bertec has, they put out compost continuously at, at, I think at the city yard or some someplace. I think we have composting events. Orange County Sand District is willing to give. They have a lot of compost and they're willing to bring that compost back into the community and give it to the city or the individual, so. I'd recommend you talk to CRNR about the potential of having a site where residents could come continuously to get compost. I don't know if that's, that's doable or not, but and and I, in fact, I would recommend that we leave the schedule B out of this contract and maybe just say, you know, the fee schedules are to be determined after you know, further costs and negotiations with CRNR. Because what I would, what I would like to see. And I'm supportive of just about everything in the, in that contract. But what I would like to see before we approve that contract is a development of the CRNR or development of the thirteen eighty-three costs, which is the CAP, CRNR and staff costs or whatever. And and then an estimate, well, not an estimate, but a determination of how we're going to how how much reserves are appropriate in the solid waste contract. And then a determination of how we're going to charge the residents for the thirteen eighty-three costs, the CAP costs and whatever. And and the biggest, the biggest cost to the district for the thirteen eighty-three costs are the occupancy charges. And so those occupancy charges are are probably appropriate because they're they're buying trucks and they're buying carts and they're buying equipment, but I would like to have staff negotiate with CRNR, you know, to phase in that, phase in those costs. And I know that, you know, there are one time costs for trucks and carts. But they also have a substantial existing occupancy, you know, I don't know if they're able or willing to, you know. I would like to have staff negotiate and include that in in the, in the appropriate fees. So rather than have to have, you know, a one time large fee because of the occupancy cost. That might be, we might be able to phase in those costs over time to make it easier on the residents. And I guess that's most of what I would like to see. And then can you provide that?
Yes, we can get that to you in the month.
Okay, so by the end of the month, we'll have that additional material as well as I think it's appropriate to move forward with, you know, with with this contract.
But before we move, with it, do we have to have things back from Scott?
Yes. Well, as far as I'm concerned, yes.
I'm not quite sure if we get all that information or not.
I'm, we can get all that information for you for for your January board meeting.
Some of it will just be estimates, but.
Okay, good. Sounds good. Great. Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. So I'm not a conspiracy guy, but it seems like Suri and Lex and all that, the conspiracy is true because President Newton must have heard everything in my house this weekend because I second everything he was saying.
I have access to your emails.
Yeah, exactly. So all my notes, somehow you have good vision, but so I would second pretty much everything that Director Ooten had just said. One thing like to go down the road is, so for the previous three or four sessions, we've been looking at the LD for the missed pickups as being on a monthly basis. Then for some reason, last month or last review, it went to twenty-three per week. Wasn't sure why we went to that. Now we're going yearly. Why the change?
Discussed internally. We would like to pass on the liquidated damages annually. It would just be easier on staff. It would be easier at at the end of the fiscal year to say, hey, CRNR, for the last fiscal year, you owe us this much. So to avoid confusion, we decided to change the miss collection to an annual number, just so it's easy with, it's consistent with how we will be asking for the liquidated damages.
So I have a couple of concerns with that. I get what you're saying and I, I guess I'd always assumed whatever the LDs, if there were any, it'd be collected annually anyway. But my concern is not tracking this on a monthly basis. Weekly is, that's silly, too much, but monthly at the ninety-two. Because again, whatever my math is, but let's say the whole point, no one wants to charge LDs. The whole point is to get reliable, good service throughout the course of the year and improve. No one really wants to go down this road, but it's there to hopefully, you know, keep the service going at a, at an expected level. But let's say, for instance, CRR are for ten months of the year, missed a hundred pickups and then the last two months were zero. Well, for ten months out of the year, our, our customers have been not getting the service that they need. But then we don't charge them an LD because the total for the year was less. So that's one thing. I would like to see it go back to ninety-two per month, collected annually on all these LDs, whatever it is. I think it's going to help hopefully avoid any LDs and also just again, I want to see consistent improvement, consistent service throughout the year, not just for one, two, three months of the year and things like that. So that was my biggest concern with the change here, so.
Yes, our intention was not to just review all the missed collections once a year and here's your LD. We will still monitor missed on a monthly basis and we can provide you that data as well. You know, we've seen uptick in in missed collections. We're going to reach out to CRNR and say, what's going on? You know, we need to, we need to do better, provide better services. So we will continue monitoring them on a monthly basis. That's not, that's not going to be.
Well, monitoring and actually enforcement are two different things. The way it's written right now, eleven, eleven oh four miss for the year, period. I don't, I like it better at the ninety-two. I just do. I don't, eleven oh four is for a year. I just don't agree with that change, so.
What is easier for you?
If you change the language, it would be eleven oh four divided by twelve is ninety-two. So we could change the language, ninety-two pickups per month. It's still the same number annually. But I do see what Director Echols is saying. It makes sense that we can make that change and we can speak with CRNR. I'm sure they will be okay.
Awesome. Thank you.
Whether we say it's eleven oh four annually or ninety-two a month, the number is still the number, right?
Correct, but we do see Director Echols' point.
Yeah, I.
We could have a hundred and fifty-one month and then zero the next month. It skews the reliability of a monthly weekly service.
Yeah, I, I think it's imperative that we look at and monitor it as often as we can. I agree, a weekly thing is way over encumbering to you guys and to CRNR actually. So I, I don't mind having that change to ninety-two a month annualized at eleven oh four. I mean, that just gives more clarity all around, I think.
Well, I would agree. Clarity in contracts is key when there's gray areas. We all don't like it.
Especially when, especially when there's money involved.
Exactly. So that's all I had for right now. Thank you.
Let me clarify that. So, so the staff will monitor the LDs and report. And I think included in that would be the estimated cost of what CRNR owes because of that. Is, is that in? Yeah, okay.
Basically, the language that we had had the previous three versions of this, that's what I'd like to go back to. Now, collecting LDs annually, that's makes perfect sense. Hopefully, we don't even need to collect, but, you know.
Hopefully, yeah. We had public comment from our CAC president. Can you, one of you kind of elaborate or clarify? I don't remember discussion about a thirty-five gallon cart. Did I miss that?
No, it is not written in the twenty-eighteen contract or in this one, but it's something that we do offer with CRNR's partnership. It is something that's never been specified, but again, it is offered. We can include it in the amendment and specify that we have the option to pick from three sizes, thirty-five, sixty-five, and ninety. That is an easy edit and again, clarity and consistency.
Well, the clarity part for me is I don't remember ever seeing the number thirty-five. I, I don't know if I just missed that or if if it, I don't remember thirty-five being in the equation. So you've got that.
Yes, that is an edit we can change. And again, it has never been specified in the contract, but CRNR has offered it.
Okay, okay.
So are you going to publicly, are you going to tell people in the education component of this process that thirty-five, sixty-five, and ninety or ninety-five is available?
Yes, we did discuss with CRNR prior. We will be emailing a pamphlet saying, per our records, your home has this many of carts. These are the sizes. You confirm if you would like to change them. You have the options of thirty-five, sixty-five, or ninety.
I, I, I guess my, my comment on that is we, we generally, the majority of the people get, you know, the bigger carts. And the thirty-five is an exception. So I would rather leave it as a reaction to people who come back to us and say, hey, you know, I can't handle a bigger one. If we publicize the fact that we have a thirty-five, sixty-five, ninety-five, we're opening it up to a lot of people getting the thirty-fives, which you know, for the exception, for the people who don't have the room or elderly or whatever, I think we need to react to them rather than make it, hey, here's one of your options. Because I think a lot of people will take care of that option and I would rather not see that many thirty-fives out there. I mean, we're trying to get people to fill that thing up. And the first time they can't fill up that thirty-five, they're going to call somebody and say, oops, this isn't big enough. So now we've got another action we have to take.
Actually, I would probably hundred and eighty degree difference. I have one sixty-five degree cart, which I put about this much in. And, you know, my fear is that I'm, I'll put that out on the day that CRNR comes and gives me a ninety-five gallon recycle cart. So I'm not going to put it out that week. But I, you know, I need, I need the thirty-five gallon cart. A lot, some of our, some of our public has come in and said, you know, I put this much in a ninety-five gallon cart. I don't think they're gonna. I think people will stick with what they got.
I, I, I agree with that. I think they will.
And then, but I think it should be made an option for, it'll, it'll ease, it'll ease the people's minds that don't have the room and so on and so on, for whatever reason, they need a little, little cart.
I mean, I'm just trying to make it easier. I, this is my.
In my complex, a lot of people have the thirty-five because of room.
Yeah.
And, and, yeah, the same with my son who lives in a condo. A thirty-five is perfect for that. So I, I just think the more options you give people, the more confusing and the more convoluted it gets, that's.
It's just, it's just warm and fuzzy feelings.
You're good at that. Okay, so the public comment point two three knocks, does, I mean, you're doing that in Newport, right, Mike? Three, three knock and talks or whatever you want.
You personally?
We don't need that in a contract.
Do we need three knock and talks and customizing?
That is a service offered by CRNR for SB thirteen eighty-three compliance. We have not discussed how many. It is something that we can ask staff, bring it up in our next meeting with CRNR and get more clarification. We have tried a similar program in the past. It was a walking to the neighborhood program. And we found that they didn't want to talk to us. You know, we were trying to. Different days of the week, different hours. You know, sometimes I'd be like, okay, like this is, you're taking my time or sometimes I would be like, I'll take the kitchen pill, but I don't, you know, I'll look through the information. I don't need it, so. It is, maybe the knock and talk can be something after they receive the contamination fee. Maybe it's something of like, hey, you've received two and how can we help you? That is something that we can definitely speak with CRNR further.
Thank you for being blunt because that's what it, that's what it needs. I mean, I couldn't agree with you more. You knock on someone's door. New, maybe Newport's different, but I don't think so. You knock on their door, they don't want to talk to you. They don't, you know, so.
All, all of us have knocked on doors. All, all of us have knocked on doors to get up here and we know how that is. And the other fact, that doesn't need to be in the contract. There's a service that we wanna work with. It's part of, that's, yeah, super.
Well, I think we should use a, a President Reagan, uh, quote that said, I'm from the government and I'm here to help.
If we let Harry represent the government, we're. No, it, it's, i- if, if they're like me, it's. They're gonna get from my ring, what the hell do you want? Who are you? So, so I, while I, I agree that the public outreach and talking to people is necessary. I, I agree with Director Eccles. It doesn't need to be in the contract. And it should be something that we can work out with CRNR. Have the faith that they'll, they'll do what they need to do. If you don't, we'll, we'll throw some liquidated damages on you. Nabilah, thank you. I mean, you, you said that, I think.
Okay, Mike, in your experience, how many did you do in Newport? You, you're doing, you're doing it on a regular basis because of a contract. Oh.
Yeah.
Yep.
Only when they pull their gun out.
Are you doing knock and drop also?
No, right now we're doing.
Cause I would suggest we do that for us.
How many have you, how many is, have you needed to do that for? Really?
Really? Your car full of pails, huh?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, and then, and finally, the third point. Um. The person asked about the district being able to use data from the trucks.
I apologize. I don't have the amendment in front of me. I don't know what section it is. But in the amendment, there is a section that says that staff has access to CRNR's GIS data.
Yeah.
Uh, we will have a login and that is one of the reasons we hired an intern just to assist with tracking like a data damages, being able. Uh, between the code enforcement officer, myself and the intern will go on their track. Um, so again, not just relying on residents that do report to us versus via our app. But using that system to say the driver didn't finish the route. These, these are the amount of homes that were missed, just for more reliable, consistent data.
Yeah, I thought I'd read, I remembered reading about accessibility to the GIS. So we're, we've got that covered. Okay. All right, any further, go ahead.
I, I had just one more, uh, question, Nabilah. Can you just walk me through the, uh, the change on the, uh. The, the, the postage on, the, the signage on the carts themselves, cause I, if I'm not mistaken, we did talk about this, that. We like what they did in Newport, which it is awesome. Is that what we're referring to on that?
Yes, so as discussed in the December study session, it will be a sticker with pictures and words, bilingual words. We will have the breakdown of the cardboard and, um, staff and the board will be able to approve it before. It is printed and, um, stuck on the lids and we will not be embossing the lids.
That, okay.
Good.
That, that's phenomenal because read for dummies. Right here, any pictures and words. It's perfect. What you guys did in Newport, we duplicated, you know.
Color pictures work.
Yep, yep.
Um, as a side. How did your drivers react to this Christmas? They must have had cardboard out the. Uh, it must have been a mess. Has been able to sell it anywhere? Yeah, that's, I've, that's what I've been reading. Okay, other questions on item two? Good discussion, I think. Uh, next step then is revisions back to us the end of the month, Scott.
And yes, we're, our, our ten is to give you the final version in the month and hopefully you'll, you'll consider approving.
At the board meeting.
Yes.
But, uh, but included was Director Ooten's.
We'll have that information for you to discuss before you make, take your action.
Perfect.
Perfect, yeah. Time to, time to get going. Okay, um, if there are no other discussion on item two, we'll go to bin service for the horses.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Here we go. So, so you, I just wanna clarify for the board and, and. In today's meeting, um, and as you see on the screen and the staff report, when I'm talking about, uh, carts and bins, I want to. Make sure everyone understands the difference. So, uh, when I'm talking carts, uh, as you see on the screen here, we're talking carts that are typically used. For single family households and these are the carts that we use for our services. When I'm talking about bins, then you'll see the one, the, the bin below it. That's usually typically for, um, commercials and large multifamily units. Um, and those are, um, the, the carts, go back to carts, those are used, are picked up by, what's it called, side loaders? You know, when they're, they're picked up on the side of the truck and then emptied in, in, into the truck. The bins are picked up, which are called front loaders. We have the forks in front of the bin, in front of the trucks that, that lifts up the bins and empties it into the truck. So. So that's what I'm telling you. When I'm talking about carts, I'm talking about what we use, bin services typically used for commercial and, and multifamily, um, units. Go to the map, please. So, um, I'll pull up the map here. Here we go. Okay, so since the fifties, uh, we've been collecting solid waste, uh, trash in the Newport Heights area. And so probably ask me, well, how do I know that? How do we know we've been picked up since nineteen fifty? We don't have a formal contract. We never had any formal contract with the county, uh, prior, before it was annexed into Newport Beach. But what I did find in our records was resolution number sixty-nine. This was adopted on September sixteenth, nineteen fifty-eight. Back in those days, the, the, the public, I actually believe, elected the board officers. They were actually elected. And in the resolution has polling places, the list of the polling places. And one of those polling places was located at, on Acacia Street in Santa Ana Heights. So that leads me to believe, yes, we were servicing that area in the fifties, or at least in the late fifties. Okay, so I know that. As you see, um, part of that, uh, uh, area of the neighborhood is zoned for equestrians, where it says REQ. Uh, that is zone for equestrians use. So people can put stables, um, and horses on, on their property. Obviously, um, horses, you know, they generate waste and, uh, a lot of it. And when you put it in the, in the carts. Uh, it weighs it down and it makes it too heavy for the side loaders to pick up. So they have to resort to bins. Under our contract with CRNR, we do not provide bin services. So therefore the residents have to, uh, rely on. Uh, the city's Newport Beach non-inclusive franchise agreements, which basically it's similar to here in Costa Mesa where. Uh, there's a list of, of haulers that meet certain required, requirements on, uh, under the city's guidelines. And then they provide a list, which it's, there's a list of those haulers on your, on your staff reports. This, uh, residents could contact any of those haulers to find the best rates and, um, uh, agree to that. And then they provide that, that bin services. Uh, to their, to their, uh, residents. What the city is receiving is a complaint from one resident in that neighborhood that there are, uh, four different haulers picking up bins. Six days a week, all day. And so as you can imagine, there's a noise issues, uh, traffic issues, just, you know. Quality of life issues, having all those trucks there. And so he wants something to be done. Um, so the city reached out to us, say, hey, is there something we can help out or maybe help, help on this issue? And so that's what we think. Well, maybe we can. Look at providing the bin services. Now, um, I did reach out to LAFCO, Local Agency Formation Commission, to see if there's any issues with LAFCO. Uh, as far as municipal service reviews or sphere of influence. And according to the executive, um, director at LAFCO, because. We already provide the service within our boundaries, uh, a- and, and we've been providing it since, since the fifties. Um, LAFCO does not have to be involved in this process. Okay, so that's not, so that's a dead issue. So that's good. So we don't have to go down that road. Uh, if you do want to, uh, do bin services, um, uh, there are, um. Some issues that we still need to, uh, resolve, uh, and I have Alan Burns, our attorney, looking into it as far as. You know, if, if we're gonna be, if we're gonna set the rates, um, does that require Prop two eighteen hearings? Uh, or if CRNR is the one that sets the rates, does that require Prop two eighteen? So we're still investigating that. Um, does it, has to involve, so. Do, do we have to give the haulers any kind of notice because, uh, we are now going to exclusive franchise? Alan Burns thinks, yes, I, I have a different opinion on that because technically we're not terminating the contract with those haulers. They still have a contract with the city. So they can still provide that service elsewhere in the city. It's just that within our service areas, we do have exclusive franchise. We wanna keep it that way. And so. Therefore, we, if we wanna go that way, we can provide, we can provide bin services. In your staff report, I did say, uh, there are twenty-one homes that are currently in bin service. That's in, that's inaccurate. It's not correct. Uh, Mike Carey brought to my attention, those are just CRNR accounts, twenty-one homes. So for the other three haulers in there, I do not know how many accounts need that. I still need to find that out from, from the city of Newport Beach. But if, if the board wants us, what we're seeking today is, do you want us to move forward with this? And if that's the case, then we, then I still need to meet with. With Alan and, and work out those legal issues. Then I also need to meet with the city officials and also have a meeting with the residents. And let them know this is the route we're going, um, and see what kinda pushback we get from the residents and, and then they can report back to, to the board. Um, but that's my staff word for this morning. I, again, today I'm looking for direction in the board. Do you want me to proceed? If not, you don't want to proceed, then, then we'll, I'll just tell the city, sorry, now that we can do, you're on your own. You want us to help, then explain that the next steps we have to take.
So though, all those residents that have horses, they have been serviced. They opt for bin service themselves. And you're wanting. Bin service, are we gonna do individual bins like are currently being done or we're?
No, so basically, it, it go back to staff report. So basically, what we would do, provide the bin service.
Yeah.
That would be, uh, uh, this, right now it's non-exclusive, it'll be exclusive. Just CRNR provide that service.
Okay, that was gonna be my next question is all those other haulers.
It'd have, we, we sent them a letter, a cease and desist, uh, which we've done in the past. We, 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 we have found other haulers. Providing cart services in our service area. The one we send them a cease and desist, they, they obey. So, um, that's what we do. We send them a cease and desist and say, you know, it's just a franchise hauler, uh, and we're, and CRNR's gonna provide this service.
Does each one of them need a bin though?
Uh, the one that have horses, yes.
Some of the residents do have our curbside service, our three carts, and then they have a bin for their horses. And the bin is who they can contract with CRNR West Management, where Republic. So a lot of those residents on that street, I believe it's less than five that don't have our carts at all. Which they just use the dumpsters on site for all of their waste.
So they're putting their waste, if they have horses, they're putting their stuff.
Some of them have more than one bins. Um, I've only seen, cause I've visited in the past that whole neighborhood. Some of them might have two dumpsters just because of the amount of, you know, waste that is produced.
Okay. All right, now you, it, it, my last question, you said the city is asking for, you're talking about the city of Newport. Does Costa Mesa, since this is our service area, Costa Mesa has nothing to do with the franchise. In, into this area, right? Okay, by the way, that map you had that said Santa Ana Heights, don't let people in Santa Ana Heights see that. They don't. I'm being facetious. They don't like to be called Santa Ana Heights. Anyway.
Yeah, thank you. Um. My suggestion, because the minute I saw this late last week, I said, uh-oh. And then I saw Alan's email this morning. I think we gotta be a little careful how far we go into this. I know this area very well. I, I know many people up there and the. The customer complaints are real. It is a big problem, um, up there. I would suggest we dive deeper into this, uh, as a potential solution because it is a need up there. The people. Just the amount of weekends I would walk there and throughout the week, there was a truck on every street, every, it was just, it was. Yeah, it was, it was noisy on top of the airplane. So, um, I would suggest moving forward, but. I think there's some legal ramifications, again, with the current franchise haulers. I know we've done it before, but we gotta tread lightly. On this thing going forward. So I would, before we review too far down on this, that, uh. Legal review before we go too far with it. So I would, I would say. Start investigating, but we don't wanna dive too far because of legal.
Don't continue proceeding with this.
Right, yeah.
I think the Newport Beach is gonna have the problem, aren't they, of letting the, all the customers, and not the customers, but also the customers, the vendors know. They're gonna say, hey, you're gonna have a cease and, the cease.
Yes, but I, again, I, I need to know how many accounts there and I, they're all honestly, we're not, we're, again, remember, we're not, we're not asking the city to terminate. Their, their contract with these haulers. They're still gonna provide the service. So how much revenue they're gonna lose from these homes, I, it's probably insignificant. To be honest with you, you know, because they're still providing services throughout the city.
Have you discussed this with CRNR?
I have not yet. I'm, I'm waiting for getting directions from you before I, I move forward on this.
I think it's smart, like Brett says, to have one vendor. If it's not us, it should be someone else. But I think it'd be fine if CRNR agrees. Yeah, I, I, I was thinking about all those trucks and they're all on different schedules. If we have one hauler, then they know. This day of the week, your bins are gonna get picked up. That, that really is a big mitigating factor in the noise and all that. The rest of it, I would think. I, I'd say go ahead for.
Yeah, I would too, definitely.
Well, I, no, I, I think it's, I think we should go forward with it. But if there's trucks everywhere there now, um. The trash contractor are still gonna have trucks there in similar quantities. They, they, they may be able to schedule them a little differently. Um, you know. But there won't be fewer trucks in the area.
But, but there's only gonna be, maybe they have one day or two days to collect it instead of five or six.
Okay, yeah, I, well, so, you know, I, I think we need to think this through. Um, I, I think we should. Be supportive of it. I am very supportive of the concept of. Costa Mesa and Newport Beach having one. One bin collect, one bin collection contractor.
Yeah, so that's a whole nother.
Probably not gonna happen, but.
So. This stuff gets picked up. Where does it go? Not to the AD facility. So that means.
We do a lot of that in the, in the Riverside area as well.
Okay, do we get AD credit? I mean, do we get organics recycling credit for any of this stuff?
Yes.
Okay. I just anticipating our, I, I know. About that, so I thought.
We wanna get the seventy-five percent, so.
Arlene, did you have any questions on this item?
I was just wondering where, where it goes, what, what, um. Actually, Mike just said, our president. I, I didn't hear the response because it wasn't a microphone, I guess.
We, we do get AD credit for it because. Yeah.
Okay.
I don't wanna be the driver of that truck. At that, those bins must weigh a ton when they. My beast has horses and I know what, anyway.
I, I think proceed, that'd be by most.
I do too. I mean, it's a.
Yeah, continue to evaluate, come, come back, maybe next time and answer two thirds of the questions and.
Maybe discuss with CRNR too.
Yes.
You know.
Is that all right with you, Mike? Does, hear this out?
All right, if there's nothing else, then we'll move to closing items and any directors have any comments or items to bring up?
I had a comment.
Go ahead, Arlene.
Uh, I just wanted to say that, you know, we should have on our agenda, uh, telling the. Everybody about the award for outstanding achievement up in popular annual financial reporting. I mean, that's really significant. That's fantastic. And I think, you know. It just doesn't belong on the study section. This should be something that we. Kinda toot our horn at a regular meeting congratulating the staff.
Yes, tha- thank you, uh, Madam Vice, Vice President. We are, uh, and we will be disseminating a press release. I'm just waiting for the official word from GFOA. That we're crown winners. And once I get that officially, then, then we'll put that out.
Good. Anything else?
Good. I just mentioned it earlier and we'll hopefully talk about it in, it sounds like February, but, uh, a big thanks and to CRR and R. For the Christmas tree collections this year. Uh, obviously, no matter what the numbers are, it's drastically improved from the last couple. And that's all we, you know. And so a big thank you, you guys put a good effort out there and, um, I think that's a good lesson for this new agreement. That, hey, we're all accountable to each other and we all want the best service. So, uh, great job and thank you. Um, for getting it done and continuing over the next few days for those tardy trees. So, thank you.
Good. Anything else? And we are adjourned.